Mayor, David just texted me that he's having internet issues at work and is trying to rejoin.
Thank you. I know that we have several others joining, so I'll wait just one more minute. I will say that Mary called and she got called into work today and will not be able to join. Good morning, everyone. I would like to call this joint meeting of the Silva Board of Commissioners and the Silva Planning Board to order. And you should have an agenda that was sent to you and I will just turn this over to Karen to get us started on this workshop.
Let's try that again. Good morning. Thank you to everyone for allowing us to make this presentation and discussion, lead this discussion with you. I actually have made it out to Silva, so I'm joining you from the county building. Thanks to John for sending us up here. So I am excited to explore a little bit today and see your wonderful town. So I just wanted to just recap real quickly what we've been doing. As you know, we've been taking comments and responding to those of you who have provided written or text comments or email comments to us. We've put those together and generally tried to respond. I know it has not been quickly, but we have responded hopefully to each one of your comments. Then what we do is we take those comments and we're incorporating them into the document. So we're going to have today's discussion after we get a lot of the comments and things from today, feedback from today. We're going to take those comments, incorporate those into the documents, and then you'll get an updated set of each one of the articles. And those articles are highlighted in yellow with any of the comments that we, or any of the changes that we've made since our last workshop. So you'll be able to quickly identify what was new or what was discussed. And then we're going to come back, hopefully you'll have most of December to review those documents. And then we're going to come back in January and do another one of these workshops to kind of just iron out any of those last minute discussion items that we haven't done. Bring back any questions last minute. But we're hoping that during the month of December, you are able to review everything and get us back those solid feedbacks. So that if we have to make any sort of policy type changes, that those are going to be incorporated. And both Planning Board and Board of Commissioners is brought up to speed so that, you know, nothing's trying to slide by. Nobody's trying to slide anything by anyone at this point. We're really just trying to get everybody's feedback and make this the best document for Silva. So with that being said, just any questions before we start? All right, let me pop this up. Hold on one second. Share screen. Okay. Can you all see the outline form of that presentation?
Yes.
Okay, let's. Okay, so basically again, today we're just going to go over more meant for, again, a discussion. So I would like to keep you all engaged in this. And as we go through, if you have any questions or if I'm not addressing something that you wanted to have addressed. But this is basically going off the topic list that was sent to you, and we tried to answer some of those questions in a little bit more detail. Okay, so basically there again, you get to see me. Daniel Rao is another planner in our office who has been essential in getting your ordinances written. He has been, he is our worker bee and has been great asset to this project from our, from our project team. And Brenda Vega is our Director of Planning and she oversees this entire process. Okay, here's just an overview briefly of again, what today's topics are going to cover. It's the use of native plants, the development process and some of the changes that are coming with that process and procedures. Talking about major and minor site plans, if we even want to make that distinction. Talking about agricultural levels or tiers rather than just having a blank agricultural use in the town. We're talking about accessory structures and accessory dwellings. That gets a little confusing and there's some thresholds that come into play when it involves mixed uses. Then we're going to also talk about the revisions to the commercial corridor overlay, because I know there were a lot of concerns about that last time. Just differentiating between outdoor advertising billboards and off-premise signs and some of the changes we're making to Article Eight regarding those. And then we're going to talk about just really basic definitions, lot size, width, and some of your other requirements. And that we've added in some diagrams to make those definitions a little bit easier to see. And then we're going to talk about some of those things that we're going to talk about in the future, or that you'll be discussing in the future after this project is done. Okay, so the first one we're going to talk about is the use of native plants. We did get quite a bit of feedback that, that members of the boards would like to use native plants in, in the ordinance. So what we're doing is that we're going to try and change, well, not very much try, we're going to change all the ordinance right now so that anything that new is planted or replaced will be using native plants. You got the Appendix A, which was provided to us from the county, is a list of native plants. And we're probably going to update that a little bit. I know we've already gotten some comments back on that, so thank you again for getting those comments to us. And we will again revisit some of the plants that are on that list, but for the most part you have that. So if anyone is a plant buff or has a thorough knowledge of native plants and wants to provide again additional feedback on that list, we would welcome that. If you're asking, why do we even bothering, like what's the purpose of using native plants? Native plants are those that are indigenous to the region or have been brought here hundreds and hundreds of years ago and are considered native at this point. They're healthier and generally more resistant to, or resilient in, in terms of the climate of this area. The pests that we see in this area, the, you know, temperature drought resistant, those types of things. So that's the push to use it. Also, you'll hear invasive versus non-invasive. Everyone knows that kudzu is like the, I think it's the quintessential invasive plant. And we see that growing on road sides all throughout the Carolinas. But that's an example of, that's an extreme example of an invasive species that just takes over everything and then can eventually choke out or kill whatever it's climbed over. The text in Chapter Seven is going to be revised or has been revised, most of it's been updated already, to reference not only that plant list, but it's going to be to use native plants. And then when it talks about removal or upkeep of plants, we're going to talk about the removal of those invasive species. I don't think the town is at any point, at this point, ready to move forward with taking down any trees that are not native. Just because that is such a massive change in not only cost, but also that's a huge policy change. So right now, the use of native plants is just going to be on the install. And then we will, as time goes on, and we can add this to that future discussion list, where we want to go with native plants and how far we want to bring that culture to Silva. So in terms of like replacing things that die and all that, it's all going to be just the new plants for right now. Okay, any questions on that slide or discussion? Is we okay moving forward with this?
I guess I do have a question about that. So 107, there's going to be a lot of impacts from 107 and people are going to be, have to be replanting. Is that the responsibility of the business owner or the landowner? Or is there a fund from the DOT to pay for stuff like this? Because native plants are more expensive than what you can buy at Lowe's.
Exactly. Yes, we are aware of that. So there are, and it's not necessarily always the case, but in general, if you're mass planting, native plants are going to, you know, could cost more expensive, especially if you're going off a specific list. As far as the 107 project, I am not sure. I would think that DOT has some funding within that budget to allow to replace the landscaping that is being taken down. And I don't think there is a requirement by the town at all to replace anything that is taken down. I think that'll be up to the individual owner if they choose to replace that. If that's, you know, because again, that's more of a, an infrastructure project. So it's not that you took it down or a business owner took it down voluntarily. It was taken down because there was a right-of-way expansion. In terms of putting it back, I would just like to see that there, there could be the use of native plants. Again, the ordinance is written so that John has the ability to give a little bit of leeway if native plants are not available readily, or if there's an instance where the use of a native plant doesn't make the most sense. And, you know, we, we've talked about this with staff, is to have, what, what are those leeways going to be and how are we going to work around that? But I don't, it's not intended to be a hardship for anyone who is trying to do that. But in terms of doing the replacement, I honestly don't know the answer to that, like who is actually paying for it? Or if DOT has created a landscape fund. Paige, do you have any information about that? Or I don't really know the answer to that.
Looking to see if Rose was on the call. She probably has more information.
Yes.
I am, and these projects do include a significant landscaping as part of the budget for the project. As far as the species, I don't know any information about that, but DOT is trying to use more native species in there right away.
Yeah, let me jump in here quick. So if there is a taking, a portion of the property that would be taken, the property owner is, you know, obviously compensated for that. And that would go for if the, if a sign comes down, like their permanent sign comes down, they are compensated for that for replacement. So it's really up to the property owner on their property to replace those things because they're being compensated for that. Not only the right-of-way taking, but also anything that is going to be in the new right-of-way, a structure, for example. They, they would get compensated for. So the early conversations we've had, for instance, with the businesses along 107. If a sign that is legal non-compliant now, and that sign has to be replaced due to the project, they would have to obviously comply with the ordinance standard. So it's going to be the same thing with, with the landscape standards as well on the private property side.
Sorry, I'm just taking some notes. Okay.
I would add too that I'm aware that there's a bill that's passed the Senate, the North Carolina Senate, requiring the DOT and state organizations to use native plants. It's waiting to be heard in the House. So that could be something that the state is moving towards in general.
That's good. That's, that's positive, except for the budget bill that is going to then require, not require us to have any landscape requirements. Any, you know, save any existing trees, but we're keeping our fingers crossed that gets removed from that budget. So it would be nice to see that we have not conflicting types of of legislation. So hopefully that the state does make a move to preserve some of our native, native vegetation. So thanks for that update, Melissa.
Yeah, and I was just going to say too, I think, oh, sorry, Melissa, go ahead. Sorry to interrupt.
Oh, I was also just going to add another reason to, that I support using native plants in our town is that not only are they more suited for our climate and region, but it also is going to provide habitat for insects, birds, animals. So as our town develops, we're going to lose habitat. And this can allow the habitat to coexist with human spaces. Because a lot of the, you know, insects and birds and such, they don't use non-native plants. They either can't use them or they use them in a less useful way.
And I was just going to jump in too, like especially with 107, you know, we know what's coming. And so we should be ready, I'm sorry, I was a little off the ordinances, but but there's no reason we can't be ready to replace things with native species because we know what, how long it's going to take. So it's not like a last minute thing, like, oh, you know, there's, there's a shortage of, of native plants. We can, we can look forward and start getting ready. I mean, like, you know, there's going to be enough time, we could grow them. You know, I'm, I'm just saying there are possibilities that we plan ahead, that we shouldn't have to use the excuse that there's a shortage by the time we start to replant. And the other thing I was going to say is too, is I don't know if there's some way that we can make it more expensive for folks to use non-native plants. If that's something that we have the power to do in an ordinance, you're sure you want to put in non-native plants? And that it's going to cost, there's going to be some kind of surcharge. So we actually try and do something to bring the cost of native plants on par with the stuff at Lowe's. Just a thought.
As to the availability too, I wanted to add that there's at least two large wholesale nurseries that specialize in native plants in the Asheville area. As well, even at local nurseries, I see red buds, sour woods, dogwoods readily available. So it may be, it may require a little bit more legwork, I guess, to do a large scale development with native plants. But I don't think it's going to be an impossibility.
And you're not the first community that is making this move. I think I mentioned it at the last meeting, but the city of Durham, which, you know, is here in the triangle, made a move to do native plants in their entire community. So that's just, that's not only city, but that's also county of Durham. So it's, and they have, you know, very, very, you know, strong urban center in Durham, but then in the county, you know, big open spaces. And their process was led by volunteers. So it was actually initiated outside of the town. You know, personnel and staff and boards, and it was by like a nonprofit organization that approached the town. And they did a nine-month overhaul of their ordinances to move to a native plant type ordinance. So there, there is, you know, the basic stuff that we're going to be doing in terms of like encouraging the use of native plants and, or requiring it in certain instances. But, you know, it's, it's again, it's a bigger movement. And if the state passes legislation that allow, you know, that is making that push, that, that's even going to make that availability easier. And the, again, changing the culture so that it's not, it's a normal thing to do. Okay, so every step in the right, you know, all making these little baby steps in the right direction. So. All right, I'm going to go on.
And Karen, sorry, just one more thing. And this, this would not require like private homeowners or individuals to use native plants, correct? This would be only for developments that the planning staff would be reviewing.
Right, yes. Right now, there's no real resident, there's no real residential requirement to put in trees or anything at this point. Right now, most of those are when there's a bigger development, like if you, you know what I'm saying? If somebody just builds a house on a single lot, there's no, you know, landscaping requirements at this point for that individual lot. This is when there's a development, a non-residential development. So it's any type of, you know, parking lots, I think it's six spaces or more, you have to put in landscaping. There's thresholds for whether that has to come in. But no, this is not for the individual homeowner. Although for those, we will make recommendations that it's native, but that's not a requirement at this point, because there's no real.
State statute limits our ability to do that for private residential, single-family builds on, on individual lots. So we, you know, unless it's in a major subdivision where they have covenants that they can enforce, we're limited in those things for single-family dwellings.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so the next one we're going to talk about is sort of the development process that is included in Article Three. So we did touch on this, but again, we didn't really have much of a consensus moving forward as to where we are with some of these things in here. So what, some of the changes were due to the 160D update. Those are that conditional uses are no longer valid. We have to use special uses. Planning Board review of quasi-judicial, that was always sort of one of those things that was on it, but it never was really discouraged. Now it's really discouraged in 160D. We talked about minor modifications, those are changes made to the, the plans after it's approved. And then one of the other things was conditional zoning. That's the new thing. So that kind of replaced our PUD guidelines, but that's a new, a new process that was clarified with 160D. Staff requested some changes as well to this development process, just to speed up things and to make it more clear as to who's going to be reviewing and doing what. And then we made some recommendations based on best practices that we're seeing throughout the state, things that the North Carolina Planning Association has recommended or school of government.
Question real quick to take us, or it's just a moment. What, are, is there going to be discussion on the, on each of these later? Are we having this as we go along?
I'd like to have it as we go along, but we can stop and, you know, or follow up if we have to afterwards. If there's something that we can't come to a consensus on right now, we can talk about it.
Well, I just had some topics to bring up on the native plant thing, if that was.
Oh, we can go back.
Yeah, sorry about that. So I'd like to make a suggestion on that. I think rather than, than limiting what can be used to natives, I think is specifically in the arena for shrubs and stuff like that. Non-invasive, non-natives, looking at this through the lens of a commercial landscaper. Stuff like hydrangeas, roses. You know, lower petalum, pothentilla, viburnums, birria, red twig deciduous dogwood, stuff like that. I think you're limiting yourself for stuff that is often very good for pollinators. You got a lot of flower and shrubs, good, good pops of color there, stuff that is non-invasive. I absolutely think we need to beef up the invasive list. There's currently some things on that that aren't even listed by the state. The Forest Service has a great list and so does the North Carolina Department of Transportation. Just a suggestion moving forward, something I'd like to throw out there, I would encourage you to consider allowing non-native, non-invasives. Just as a, just because there are a lot of good landscape, especially shrubs, that you could make an argument for or against being native. That's my input on that. Sorry for dragging us backwards.
I also agree with that. I was looking for some of those plants that Jake mentioned that aren't native, but are non-invasive.
Jake, do you have a list of ones you would recommend if it's like that, that if they're not on that list?
Yeah, so, yeah, I can, I have a pretty short one right now and I can, I can put together a more comprehensive list for later, if that would be yours.
That would be helpful. If you could email that to Paige and then Paige can forward that to me, that would be, that would be very helpful.
Absolutely.
And I, yes, to add, we are adding to that invasive list that's on there. That we know that there's a couple of plants that are missing from the one that we specifically want to exclude. So that list of invasive plants is not as thorough or as comprehensive as it could be. So we know we need to add to that one. So I would be particularly interested in seeing what you have to add to that invasive list as well.
Oh, shoot, sorry. I'll also attach the, the DOT's list and the Forest Service list that as well when I send those recommendations.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, any other comments on?
Jake, is that just a matter of convenience for you to use a non-invasive?
No, I mean, not necessarily. I mean, for instance, hydrangea is one of the most widely used landscape shrubs out there. They're, they're not native to the area, but they, they're excellent for pollinators. And they're a very low maintenance, high yield. You cut them back a couple, you know, a couple of times a year, you get good full blooms. Some of them offer great fall color as well. That's just one example. Roses as well. And the point that I, I am in full support of using natives every chance we get. But I think that does limit, when we're talking about beautifying down, not even downtown, just town in general. I, I think it would be short-sighted to limit the palette, so to speak, if, if, if there's no real gain to that. But let me, let me also say that I'm in absolute support of using natives whenever, you know, whenever possible. And I do think we need to beef up the invasives list.
Sounds good. Thanks. I, I, yeah, I think that your repertoire for, for adding plants is good. But I think the onus needs to be on having the native species first. Having said that, they did do a really nice native plant garden at the new entrance to campus and ripped it out because they didn't like the way that it looked. So.
Well, those, those rhododendrons, native or, or not, should have never been planted out there in the full sun. They, they didn't have.
They need time, you know, that, those kinds of gardens need time and people don't, you know, really have the patience. You know, it just doesn't seem like they had the patience to wait for that garden to, to, you know, reach its potential.
Right.
And then we have the issue of the trees downtown, which are non-native, I guess, non-invasive. But those were planted because of convenience, for one. And then I think there was something about a taproot or something that was, didn't want to go in the sewer or something like, so there's always going to be a circumstance. So I guess I would support your non-native, non-invasive trees for certain situations.
And I think we also need to be aware of the landscape companies. Because like Jake said, a lot of those plants are used in landscapes that, maybe we, Jake can check with some of those businesses also to see, because I know when they come and plant things, they plant those things that Jake was talking about, like the hydrangeas and different things that I didn't see on our list. So I would like to see the list that he brings that are non-invasive plants, but maybe not native.
And just to, I was just going to say that also, you know, we start changing ordinances, we're going to start to create a demand for native plants and, you know, that there, once there's a demand for it, then I think landscapers will start to, you know, find it. And, you know, there'll, there'll be a market for it. So just to keep that in mind too.
Well, most ordinances require this, what we're talking about. So it's, it's really nothing new. Consider yourself, you know, there's, you know, a dozen or more Silvos out there in our immediate regions. So, you know, this is not earth-shattering and most places that do have landscape ordinances require native and non-invasive. So not, not, you know, reinventing the wheel here. So I, I think if there is a demand, it's already out there.
I would add too that, like a lot of the things that Jake mentioned do have native alternatives. Like there's a native hydrangeas, there's lots of native viburnums, more shrub-like. Like there's a native hydrangeas, there's lots of native viburnums, more shrub like dogwoods and things like that. The, and you know, native rose, hibiscus are really pretty. You know, I don't think there's. I think it is definitely. Not business as usual and requires some change in thinking and maybe some more research. But maybe we should make sure. I mean, we could go through the list and make sure that there is an alternative to all those popular landscaping plants. Like I find it. I know that those trees were replaced a lot. Paige told me because of the root system, like not wanting to tear up the sidewalk. The zelkovas have like a deeper taproot and don't spread out as much, but there are native trees that also have that growing. That growing characteristic. So.
We tried Melissa to get, we tried to get a different tree.
Did you?
Yes.
Okay, if there aren't any more questions, Karen, I think we should go ahead and move back to what we just started the. Procedures, Article three.
I think David had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to give a comment that I, I think if we. Want to do this native plants thing, I think we just, we do the native plants thing. We don't really allow exceptions. I think the exceptions are there are native substitutes for a lot of these. Flowering shrubs. I mean, I, I, you know, no one said it's not going to be completely inconvenient, but I think it's. Very feasible and, and you know, once people have committed to it, it's, it's fairly easy. And there are a lot of nurseries to accommodate. So. I mean, it'd be, it's sad to see some of the common landscape plants like hydrangeas go, but. And if we want to entertain having a non invasive, non native list of exceptions. That don't have good native substitutes, I'd be open to it, but I prefer we just stick to the requirement of native only.
Okay, we will draft something up. You know, to include in chapter seven, and then we'll have a discussion, we know, we'll bring that back. So hopefully you guys can all review that while we, you know, in December and take a look at that, not only that list. But if we do some sort of an exclusion and list those. I just want to recommend before we move on to the next thing, this is an excellent. Reason to have a town board, like a small committee formed to put out educational materials to not only your. Developer community, but also to your residents about it, because seriously, this is just an educational component. I think people, again, gravitate towards what's easy and what is available at Home Depot. But if people aren't going to be buying what's at Home Depot, Home Depot will change what they're going to be providing to residents and things like that. So it's sort of an educational component, and I've seen it work really well. At a volunteer level, you know, as it is a committee to bring that forward. So just, you know, food for thought as we move forward into that process. Again, something that we can discuss. In the future, but we'll make these changes as we, you know, chatted about today. So thank you again for that feedback. Okay, moving on to the development process, as I mentioned, some of these were 160D initiated, some were staff initiated and some were initiated by Withers. One of the things that we talked about beginning at the last meeting was this quasi judicial process. And I don't think we really came to a complete this. Decision about it, but I do want to throw that out again. Basically with the quasi judicial procedure, it's supposed to be. Based completely on the evidence that is permitted, that is presented at the hearing itself. So. When it is heard by an additional board prior to the hearing. There's that it's open for press coverage, it's open for discussion, you might be hearing about it at the grocery store. It's just not this, you know, ex parte, there is no, you know, you're having those. Little conversations or you're overhearing it, or you might just know about it. So. We had recommended, and I think John had, John definitely chimed in on. Removing the planning board from that process and that it would go just to. Right now it's your Board of Adjustment, but that's your Board of Commissioners. And serving in that role. So. That's where that process is recommended. Now, again, we can discuss that. If planning board does review a quasi judicial application, which let's refresh what those are, that is. Variances, appeals. And special use permits. So those processes, if those are heard by the planning board. Any of the decision that the planning board makes or any of that discussion cannot be brought into the public hearing. That all is just, you know, sort of like hearsay, and that's the conversation. So that, again, the. It's not supposed to be used in the determination by the decision making board. So that is our recommendation, how we can again, discuss this a little bit more. There's also another consideration to make that if planning board, if we feel strongly that planning board is the board that wants to hear it. We could make planning board be act as the Board of Adjustment. That's another option. And then also. You have that option to make the Board of Adjustment or the Board of Commissioners, the decision maker in the quasi judicial. Process. So if you made planning board, your Board of Adjustment. Then planning board would be the one that is hearing the quasi judicial decisions. If you would like that to stay at the Board of Commissioners, you could still make that Board of Commissioners and you can change it. Board of Commissioners hears was. All quasi judicial don't have to go to the same board, so you can break it up. Special use permits can go to Board of Commissioners, but. Variances and appeals could go to Board of Adjustment. So you could make those decision, you know, you can break that up differently too. So I wanted to throw all of that out at you, and I'm sorry if that was just a little too much information too quickly. I can clarify any of those processes a little bit more, but that's kind of what we need to have a discussion. On this, how are these quasi judicial procedures going to go ahead, moving forward?
Just a question, if the planning board were to present. Their review of something at the hearing, would that? Since it was presented at the hearing, would that be acceptable?
I don't know, because at the hearing, and don't take this personally, please don't at all, but at the hearing, you're supposed to be sworn in as an expert witness. So. I. I would assume that. As a planning board chairman, you would be considered an expert, but I don't know if the. Board would consider that, like, I don't know if. Eric, you're on the call, you might be able to answer that a little bit better. I'm not really a hundred percent sure how that works in terms of. Presentation of evidence at that hearing. How does that? How would that work?
I didn't, I didn't understand if the question, what was the question? Are you serving as? Board of Adjustment plus serving as presenting evidence? I didn't. No.
I, no, I think if the process is the same, that planning board would hear it. Not hear it, it would just have a preliminary discussion. If we kept the process the same, that the Board of Adjustment is the Board of Commissioners, they're going to hear it. But. Planning board hears it preliminarily, and if they had a discussion on it and. As a board, they presented their. Heat findings as part of the. You know, entered their decision into the minutes at the hearing. Would that be, would that be, would that be allowed? Or are they not considered like, you know, or is that just considered lay?
Yeah, that's not, that's not actual. That wouldn't be admissible testimony as far as. Anybody with standing. So I wouldn't think that that would be. Often it would be considered as far as actual.
That seems like it would be a little different than what we do now anyway, because John just presents the findings of the. Planning board at the quasi judicial meeting, isn't that correct?
Well, typically in the past, if there is, if it's a legislative thing, we're coming to the board, you know. We will pass on what the recommendation of the planning board is, but since. In the, in the most recent years, especially with 160D coming down and most jurisdictions getting out of. Taking the planning board or another board. Reviewing something before it goes to a hearing at the Board of Adjustment. I have not been making recommendations or have been. Basically discussing that with the, you know, the board that makes the decision, in this case, Board of. Adjustment Commissioners. So I, I tend to. To present my findings in terms of the review and then leave it to the board to, to gather their. Evidence if there's other people with standing that present things, but I do not. You know, pass on a recommendation from the planning board, only that you've heard it.
Okay.
Karen. Go ahead, David. I, I had a question, I think I asked you this before. Do you have an idea of how many? Municipalities use. The Board of Commissioners as the Board of Adjustment and maybe how many use the planning board as a Board of Adjustment? And if there are any that have a separate, other than the planning board and the Board of Commissioners, a standalone Board of Adjustment?
So the town I live in, I live in Wake Forest, again, in the triangle, we have all three. We have a Board of Commissioners, a Planning Board and a Board of Adjustment. We've done approximately. Eight 160D updates for communities throughout North Carolina. From those at the beach to those to Silva, like we've, we've really done the gamut. Geographically, and I'll be honest, it's split, it is split pretty much a third, a third, a third. We've seen planning boards act as. Planning boards act as Board of Adjustment, and then we've seen, we have one community, and I don't remember which community it was. But we had a community. Have their planning board be their Board of Adjustment. And their Board of Adjustment hear their quasi judicial things. So their planning board heard it as the planning board. And then turned around and voted on it as their Board of Adjustment. So that was a bizarre instance as well. So we've had multiple. We've seen, we've pretty much seen it all. So I would say it's about a third. It's really done. All different ways and really is up to your community. So I can't give you like that one is better than the other. I, I think. If you had. A bigger community where you had a lot of volunteers and you could support. All three boards, I think that's probably the way to go, but realizing that that's not always practical. It is very, very typical that you have one, your Board of Commissioners or your Planning Board serve as your Board of Adjustment.
I would, I would rather have the, the town board serve as the Board of Adjustment and, and not have the planning board hear. The quasi judicial applications beforehand. I think that's the original recommendation. And my preference.
Any other comments?
If you're asking for our opinions, which it seems like you are, I would agree with David. I think if it is supposed to be this, this very official. Procedure that. It would be better not to have the planning board review it at all ahead of time. And that it should be the Board of Commissioners that. Is primarily responsible for reviewing and approving it because they are elected officials, they have more. Well, they're more official.
I agree. I agree with this. I, I think that. For us to spend the time looking over something that just kind of muddies the waters and. Doesn't get listened to in the long run anyway, because they can't. Send our recommendation. It's best that we don't hear them at all.
Yeah, I, I would agree on that too. It seems like it's just a waste of, you're just wasting our planning board's time. With that said though, I think that it is reasonable. I mean, first and foremost, I think that. That we should have the ordinances just kind of do their own work and, you know, minimize how often this is going to. You know, the Board of Adjustment. But I think it's reasonable to have the planning board act as Board of Adjustment. On some level. And the other thing I worry about though, I mean, yeah, would the board, the town board is elected officials and therefore. That can be. You know, they're politicians, there's pressure, political pressure that can fall on them, you know, the whole NIMBY thing. So I think that removing, you know, minimizing that for the town board, taking the political part of it out of it is also desirable.
So how we've done it or how we make recommendations? And again, please don't take this personally. This is just how we say it. Is that your town officials, your, your elected officials are the ones that are supposed to be making your hard decisions, right? They are elected, they are true representation of your community. Their constituents voted them in. For their voting records. So they are to make those hard decisions. So the ones that. We recommend usually go to before your Board of Commissioners. Are those ones that are special use permits? Those are the ones that are, you know, you have to make concessions, there have to be. There can be conditions upon those permits and. Not that planning board isn't. Capable of doing that, they absolutely are, but it's your elected officials that need to make those hard decisions. And that's why they're voted in. I mean, Commissioners, no offense, like I said, sometimes you don't want to make those hard decisions, that's. But that's part of that job. So we do sometimes recommend that special use permit. Is the one that always goes before Board of Commissioners. Now with your variances, variances are generally those changes to. You know, maybe the type of landscaping, maybe the setbacks. So sometimes it's okay for your Board of Adjustment. If your planning board becomes your Board of Adjustment. For them to hear variances, because the variances are very tied to that planning process and very tied to the procedures. So we have again, seen it where. You make your Board of Commission, the, the planning board becomes your Board of Adjustment and they hear the variances. But your other quasi judicial procedures where it's special use permit or. A. Appeal. Those would go before your Board of Commissioners. So again, I, I'm not trying to muddy the waters. I, I fully in support of whatever you want to do, but if you're just having that discussion. And again, this might be that moving forward, that might be a discussion after we're done with this process that we set it up like it is here. But then maybe consider making those adjustments in the future. Because I don't think it's necessarily a bad thing for planning board to. Make some of those decisions if you would want them to. And the other thing I would recommend is that John always gives a really good report on what is going on in terms of the development. I don't want planning board to feel that they're being cut out of the process at all. So if John brings those. Things back to planning board after. The Commissioners have voted on it, I think that's also a good thing to keep planning board in the loop. So when we do. Comprehensive planning and when we do future planning, that planning board is actively involved in what is still going on in the community. So I didn't mean to again, muddy the waters there, but I just wanted to, you know, throw out some other options there for you.
Are we going to go to that development process table?
We can go back to that. Sure. Hold on one second. Let me go back there.
After you explained that, I had a question about. Can you just explain the approving body, like you just said, special use permit, Board of Adjustment? But at that time. We make the Board of, the Board of Commissioners, the Board of Adjustment.
Well, you wouldn't, the Board of Commit, so whoever, whichever board is serving as your Board of Adjustment will always stay the same. What can change is who approves it. Your approving body can change. So your approving body could be your Board of Commissioners here for your, like a major subdivision. Or it could be a Board of Adjustments, especially use permits, even though they're quasi judicial, don't always have to be heard by your Board of Adjustment. It could be heard by your Board of Commissioners.
Okay. I'm just a little confused about that. And then on the variances, it's the same way that the. Planning board is the Board of Adjustments?
Again, whoever, it's whoever you decide to be. So. When it's. It's always going to be your. One board will always serve as your Board of Adjustment. That's always good, and that doesn't change per procedure. That's always like, if your planning board serves as it, it always serves that. Or your Board of Commissioner serves as it, it's. Or if your Board of Commissioner serves as it, it's always that same one. Who approves it, though, is what can change. It doesn't always have to be your Board of Adjustment or your, or your Board of Adjustment Hearing of Variance. Those procedures could also become your Board of Commissioners. So that's why you can have different approving bodies for each one of those decisions. I'm sorry if that does it, if that's confusing.
Let me jump in real quick as an example, Linda. Our county Commissioners hear quasi judicial hearings for cell towers, for new structures. Our Planning Board is our Board of Adjustment. So if there's an appeal to, you know, administratively to staff's decision, something along those lines, our Planning Board would hear that, it wouldn't go to the Commissioners. Our, we have three zoned districts in the county, Cashers, 441, and Culloway. We have three planning councils in those jurisdictions that are made up of people that own or live in, own property or live in those jurisdictions. Though, they basically serve, that we call them planning councils, they serve as a local planning board. And they've listened to special use permits for their jurisdiction. It doesn't go beyond them, it doesn't go to the Commissioners. They act as the governing board for quasi judicial and special use, for special use permit applications. So in the county level, we break it up in different ways as well. It just, doesn't always go to the Board of Adjustment. Depends on what the actual ordinance is and what the use is going to be. And, and the Commissioners have set that up to either be local with planning councils at the Planning Board level for, for county types of things. And then because at one time, not so much anymore, but cell towers were a big taboo, and they wanted to be involved with that because they felt they were elected officials and they should be more involved in making those tough decisions.
I have a question for John, based on Karen's comment about these positions being appointed or elected. What's the status of that within, in those areas? For John, were they appointed?
Yeah, the only people that are elected are the county Commissioners, everybody else is appointed, on the Planning Council and on the Planning Board.
Because I think there's some, some weight to that argument about elected officials making big decisions on, on others, like appeals and that kind of thing, as opposed to appointed people making those decisions.
That makes sense to me as well.
So we can, you know, again, think on this. In, in all honesty, it's not a huge edit change to our ordinance. In terms of my job, however, that is a huge, you know, this will be a much different change for you in the process and procedures. So if we want to just come back to this at the very end, we can, and we'll think about it as we move on. But I'd like to just keep, keep going. And then I do, I heard from everyone, you know, like, I, I have hearing that, that the thought would be, right now, keep the Town Board as the Board of Adjustment and then the Planning Board not hear or review the quasi judicial. And then again, if we want to change that, we can, but right now, that's the direction I'm going with. But we'll just circle back to that at the very end here. Moving on, also with this, so we just talked about this quasi judicial process. The next one we're talking to talk about are staff approvals and some of the reason that we made these changes. And I just wanted to clarify what this is. I don't know if you can, do you see yourselves on the thing, or can you see the full screen? You guys, okay? Can you read all the text?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So with this being the slight change in the process is that you'll see that we have removed the board from reviewing most of the plans. And that reason being is that these plans are by right. So the way that the ordinance is written is that a use is considered by right if they do not need a special use permit or a rezoning. These are ones that the use is permitted. And if that use is permitted, you pretty much cannot turn it down. There's really not many reasons that it would be turned down unless they're not meeting another part of the ordinance. But John, in his role, that is his job, is to make sure that they meet all of the requirements of the ordinance. So that's why there has been this change to just have John do the approvals on subdivisions, minor subdivisions, and all site plans. So we just wanted to clarify why that was being done. And then our next discussion on this next slide, sorry, let me, nope. Is this one, we'll go back to that next slide, is major and minor site plans. So right now, this is only an if it was a desired, because it was brought up as one of the comments, that right now, major site plan or major subdivisions still go before the board because there are some decisions that have to be made, usually with like developer agreements and things along those lines, because those are bigger developments. I know that Silva's not seeing a ton of major subdivisions. So that frequency of that is not happening a ton. But here's the discussion now, is do you want to separate out major and minor site plans to do that same process? We don't necessarily always recommend it, but again, this was brought up as one of those questions. So we just wanted to discuss it and bring it up in this presentation today. If there's a desire, Planning Board would review the site plan application and then the Board of Commissioners would approve it. It is, it is, again, it's, these are by right plans, these are ones that are absolutely follow the ordinance. This would just give the Planning Board or the Board of Commissioners approval. You really have to give it your stamp of approval, but at least you're seeing it. So that would be the only reason that we would want it to come to you. And then we suggest creating like a threshold, like 50 to 75,000 square feet, like, under 50,000 would be minor, over would be major. Minor, John would approve, major would go through this process. Where Planning Board and Board of Commissioners also review it. I don't think it's necessary, I'll be honest, I don't. I think John is very capable of approving these site plans. But depending, again, on the elected officials, if you feel that in your role, that you want to have more of a say or more of, of a control over this, then absolutely, we would go forward with why, you know, separating this out. And I included there for two examples, just to get an idea of what is a typical restaurants, fast food around that 12,000 square feet, but like a new Costco or like a Sam's Club, like one of those is 150,000 square feet. So, you know, what's the difference? You know, I mean, there, you're still dealing with parking, you're still dealing with truck traffic, you're still dealing with things. It's just the massive size that you're changing. So I don't know, what's the thought? Are there, is there, would you like to see this separated out or just keep it as site plans in general? And they would be reviewed by John. Again, those are only the ones that are by right. And when I say by right, they're, the, the use is permitted in the zoning district that it's applying for.
So the by right, so the, how would that change? So for example, the, the apartments out on Skyland, that project, would that have been a by rights project, John?
No, that, that district required a special use permit or conditional use permit, we, we call it now, approval by the Board of Adjustment, Board of Commissioners. So we had to go through that process. If it was a straight by right, where it allowed multifamily, not in a conditional use, special use category, and it just was a use by right, like, you know, any commercial activity or whatever, I would just review, apply the ordinance standards to the, to the site, which would be landscaping, parking, building, materials, et cetera, et cetera. And it would be, you know, holding their feet to the fire on the ordinance and approve the plans when they, the final plans are submitted, just like any other commercial development you see on 107, for example. But because that one fell under the category of conditional use, it had to go before you all.
I guess my question is, like, how many, would this change, if we're going more to a by right system, would that, how many, how, how would that change the way we are now? Would that, would there be more opportunities for these just to not have to go to the, to the board?
Yeah, I mean, I think, in, in my opinion, I think the ordinance should be set up to where you, your ordinance, it's more ordinance heavy. So if you have a use that you're concerned about, you have special standards for it, not a special use. It's a special standard for that use. So if you do have a multifamily in a certain district, they may have to do additional landscaping or their parking schedule may be a little bit more different as a special use. So not necessarily coming before you, but basically setting the ordinance up so you're protecting those uses and, and the surrounding properties for the specific type of use that's allowed. It, you know, special uses are important, but I think getting away from the quasi judicial part of it is, is as well, setting up more special standards in the ordinance, again, to, to protect the town and surrounding properties. And then also, you know, going more to conditional zoning, which the town, which is more of a legislative, where the town would review a large project and have more of a negotiation with the developer versus the, you know, the, the court hearing. You know, so it's more of a win-win in, in that negotiation process for the conditional zoning part of it. I think that's probably another component that, that can be brought into this and, and help the process.
I have a question about, about this is, so how would the, for example, let me refresh my memory, the Catholic Church cemetery have been handled if we did it this way?
Well, that has not been heard by the board yet, so I'd, I'd rather not discuss that on this call.
Okay, thank you.
But I will, I'll bring up another one. Snappy Loop that we heard a couple of months ago, that went through the Planning Board, it went through the Town Board, they did get a conditional use approval. I received those plans from the engineer, probably a month or so after that approval. And that's, that's just probably going back maybe two plus months. And the plans did not comply with the ordinance. I kicked it back to the engineer with a list of items that needed to be corrected before they submitted back and that they could meet the ordinance standard. That had nothing to do with the conditional use side of things. That was straight ordinance items that they had to comply with. So it would be that, that type of process where I'm holding them up until they submit something that complies with the ordinance in full.
So it's, it sounds like there's really no risk to waiving this as long as your ordinances are set up properly and you have in them what you want to see in those types of developments.
That's right.
So, so.
That, that, that's fluid. You can, if something happens and you're like, that didn't quite work out the way we really were envisioning that, okay, let's go to legislative route, let's tweak the ordinance, let's have a text amendment or, or a map amendment to fix that, that one issue, if that's, that's the case. So it, you know, it's not perfect, obviously, but I think if you, if you build it more ordinance heavy with standards, I think you protect yourself in the long run.
Right, and that's the better way to address the, to address those issues when you notice them is actually changing the ordinances rather than specific conditions placed on every single applicant that comes in, like, sort of like what we've been doing where we have the same special conditions on every applicant instead of just having that in our ordinances. So what about, though, I'm just curious, if we did keep the review for something that's a use by right anyway, does the Town Board have any ability to add additional conditions on those? Or, I mean, obviously they have no teeth to it because it's, has to be approved anyway. But, I mean, is there any, even any benefit to that?
So the board can put conditions on an approval, just as, and, and John can, just as John was saying how when an approval comes in or an application comes in and it doesn't quite still meet all the requirements. But you just, they can't be something that's not necessarily in the, there's no, there's no reason to put condition, there shouldn't be any reason to put conditions on them. If the applicant is looking for some leeway and they suggest conditions and they agree to them, yes, then you can condition it. But otherwise, on a by right, there generally are not that many conditions. We have seen them, that, that has happened at other communities. But it's an agreed upon, sort of like part of your developer agreement. In, in the case that I know of, the residents of a neighboring community came in and they wanted something and the neighbors and the developer wanted the neighbor, the neighbor's sort of blessing on it, didn't want them to cause, so he met with them and neighbors got, you know, an eight foot fence. And it was a condition, it was sort of like an agreement outside of the conditional hearing. But yeah, that type of stuff happens. But it doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, it could be written as a condition of approval, but it doesn't have to be like done that specifically. John, have you seen that happen before? And I, I, I mean, again.
No, and, and David, to answer your question, I think we, it was in your, your list of responses or comments. I, I think the use, meaning the use of special standards in the ordinance for specific uses is very important, which we don't really have now in the ordinance. And having that menu, not for, for a developer to choose from, but if, let's say, that's a very simple example. If a restaurant's coming in to, on the 107, a restaurant would be allowed use by right. If it's a restaurant with a drive-through, there's special standards for that. It doesn't go to the board, there's just a list of special standards specific for that type of use. And I think if you can hit your uses in certain districts like that with special standards, basically it's just standards over and above what the ordinance normally would require. I think that's, that's really where you would cover some of those things that you're, you're thinking about where if you were going to make it a condition anyway, let's just make it a special standard for a special, for that particular use and get it covered. It doesn't have to come before you, you've already basically spoken to it, right? It's built into the ordinance and we're moving on and, and the process is streamlined for everybody. So not getting bogged down in those, that conditional or special use process to go through that and figure out what the conditions might be, try to do that upfront and make it a special standard.
And those special standards.
It's just the only concern is, you know, these, these come up so infrequently, you know, how long before we notice a shortcoming in our, you know, special requirements? The, you know, if something large comes in and, you know, it does something that we don't particularly like, then we, you know, our only way to address it is after the fact for future development. But you're right, I mean, if the, if it's set up well, then that shouldn't be the case, so.
And those special standards are, oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, our special standards are all included in Article Five. So if you pull out Article Five, that's where you're going to find those standards that are specific to each one of the uses. So if there's a use that has, you know, something that you're like, oh, well, how come, how come we didn't address this in, you know, maybe like building height in a certain use? All of that stuff, it could be in Chapter Five. So, you know, look through there and that's where you're going to see those articles. And your current ordinance doesn't really have those. So that's what John was saying, that this, these additional standards were not in place previously. So a lot of those are new and we're creating those now. And John's taking a look at those and will take better, you know, we're, we're going through those again a second time and trying to look at where, you know, what else needs to be beefed up, what is overlapping, because we did notice that some of these didn't necessarily need to have some of the landscape requirements. So we're just going back through and looking at those, but please take a look at, that's what Article Five is, contains most of those new standards. Okay, we can still circle back to this, I'm just going back to here, another part of the development process that we, has recently come up, so you have not seen this yet, is the discussion of administrative standards and flexible standards. So we've talked about administrative modifications and what those are, are changes that John is allowed to make to an application once it's approved. So once it's already gone through the special use permit, once it's gone through that. But we want to try to be proactive and address some of these changes that happen ahead of time. So these are just examples of some of the things that we're going to be added in. So you'll see this in the revisions as we go forward about allowing staff to make some of these, again, flexible sort of administrative adjustments. And we're probably going to have an application that will adjust, that will address these things. So when an applicant comes in with their site plan or their subdivision and they need a little bit of a waiver on something. like waiver on something um small that these three things, um, and we're also gonna, we've also discussed adding in landscaping on this, so that would be four different things. That they can adjust, uh, that John could adjust. And you'll see here what we're talking about. This is not like oh, their setback is fifty feet and we're gonna let them go down to twenty-five. This is like two feet on on a setback or a parking um adjustment. Um, again, we're trying to just be flexible in the design so that you're, the variances that we're getting are for true, you know, necess, like true hardships. Um, because two feet necessarily on a setback isn't always a true hardship, you know, um. It just might be that there's a tree and you can't put your fence on your property line because it would go through the middle of a tree. So this would allow that adjustment of two feet because of those types of situations. So um again, you haven't seen this yet. This is going to be brand new that will be added in, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention that this was something that came up in a staff discussion. Um, and just trying to allow again that little bit of flexibility um so that the board is not seeing variances for some of these very, very minor adjustments. Okay.
Comment, a common question, um, this looks great. I think it saves a lot of people time. And uh my only concern would be transparency, make sure that all those decisions are, you know, known.
Right.
And any reasoning behind them.
Yes, so um, like I said, we're gonna recommend that um an application um go along with this so that, you know, the applications are usually visible to the public. If if there's ever an inquiry and you, um, somebody wants to come in and see the project file, there would be an application on file that says we are filing for an administrative adjustment of X number of feet or of X number of plants or of a lot to mention. Um, so that it is transparent because it doesn't, a- and then um John will have to, you know, approve that and say why. So and then have that signed off on by both the applicant and um the zoning administrator. So that allows that um process. So just as you would view somebody's application to find out what their zoning is, how many units they're proposing or how many square feet of a development, you would also see if they're approving um requesting administrative adjustment.
So in other jurisdictions that we administer, we have this um process embedded in those ordinances. And as part of the zoning permit approval, if this were to happen, it's happened in the past in other, other jurisdictions uh that we serve, that would be part of the zoning, zoning permit application. We would, we would do a traditional zoning uh uh application review if it's a plan involved or a new business or whatever, and if they are, if they do qualify for an adjustment, that will be part of that review and it'll be stated in that zoning permit that's approved.
Okay, any other concerns or questions on, on this? Okay, all right, let's move on. So we talked about the major and minor site plans. Um, I was not hearing that this was a major push to do this. Um, so what I think we're gonna do is just keep, keep it as just site, we're just gonna call it site plans. So you, as you see it on here, um, right now we have it broken out. It's a site or master plan. Um, and then we still can, we still break out minor and major subdivision. But we're gonna let all master, all site plans and master plans. And the difference between a site plan and master plan, in case you're wondering, is a master plan is when um an application, again, you're not seeing a ton of it, but if you do in the future where something comes in in phases. So you might um have a mixed use development where somebody wants to put in commercial in the front on the, along the roadway and apartments behind it or something along those lines or maybe townhouses. That's what we're seeing a lot of. And they want to do them in phases because you have two different builders. So you might have one builder doing a commercial development up front and you might have a different builder on a different timeline doing the residential in the back. So a master plan is basically just any type of phasing.
I think that makes sense because, I mean, we're talking about such a small geographic area that I think we would want to see both of those things.
Oh, you would want to see those?
The major and the minor ones, because I mean, we're, we're such a small air, small space that it's not like we're spread out like in Piedmont, you know. We all know, pretty intimate with like every little nook of Silva, so I would want to see both the major and the minor plans.
Site plans?
Yes.
I think the problem with seeing the minor ones is it's going to slow down your development.
I guess I'm trying to think about an example of a major one versus a minor one and I mean, Lowe's would actually be a major one, but I don't know where we would put another Lowe's, you know. I don't know where we would put another major subdev- subdivision in the town. But, but a minor one, you know, would be any, essentially anything new. That means, that means like every new restaurant would need to be coming before the board. I don't, I don't think that would be necessary. I mean, in, I understand your case for the major ones, because I don't foresee there being very many of those. You know, once, one a year tops, but definitely not the minor. And really, um, as long as we're proactive with our ordinances, I mean, the major ones, if they meet that, you know, why, why have it go before the board?
And again, it's only if it is by right. So if it's not, if it requires any sort of special use permit, if it requires any sort of rezoning, where it's going to be a legislative process, then that's going to come before your boards anyway. So again, it's very infrequently that you're gonna have a massive development like that, that is completely by right. Generally, you're not seeing those. Like that would be controversial, you know what I'm saying? Like, again, a huge apartment complex or something like that. Those are usually permitted with standards that John's gonna review. So um, I just, I guess, just so for clarification, do we want to see there be a separation between a major and minor site plan? Right now, they're all together. Site plans are just one category. And John is reviewing all of them. Is there a push to separate them out into major and minor? And have major site plans go through staff approval as well as board review and commissioner approval?
I guess I, I would say that I would want to see anything major for sure. And we're, we're putting a lot of faith in ordinances that may not exist yet. Um, there's conditions that like we're not, maybe not thinking about right now that could come up in the future, so.
Okay, and I was just gonna follow up. What would you be your threshold for major? I, I mean, like I said, we would suggest between fifty and seventy-five thousand. We've seen it upward. Some of the larger communities are going to a thousand, a hundred thousand square feet as the break, breaking point. And then to complicate it even further, do you want to make it a special use permit that it's a thou, if it's over a certain square footage that you require it, or do you keep it at minor or just a major and it's just a staff approval? So there's certain, again, certain ways to do this. Um, but if you, if you're happy with just getting it in front of the board, then we will keep it as just an um, an administrative review and it doesn't require a special use permit.
I mean, that sounds fine to me. I just, I just, yeah, Paige, that's fine. If you want to streamline it that way, that's good.
I would put major before the board.
Okay.
And Karen, I think maybe if you'll give us a recommendation.
I, I personally, I would say like sixty thousand square feet, because now that's like your typical big box is considered sixty thousand and above. But like I said, if you're not, you don't have the parcels that are gonna permit a hundred and fifty thousand square foot building at this point in time, then your major is probably going to be something that is in that sixty to seventy-five thousand square foot range.
I think if we go that route, it needs to be a special use permit.
And you think to make it special?
Yeah, because I think it muddies the water if we don't. If it's a use by right and the board is looking at it, what's the reason for looking at it other than just looking at it? Um, so i- if, if if staff is going to go through that process administratively and present something to the board, I think it needs to be a special use wherever that cutoff is.
Okay.
Honestly, I just don't want to see anything like the comfort in that happened, that's on one oh seven. You know, that's, that's a view. Are, are ordinances um strong enough to prevent something like that from happening again?
It, it actually was. The town board at the time issued a variant, they let, gave them a variance for a second or a fourth floor on that project. So they, they were enforcing.
That was a responsibility of the town board, I get you.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that also goes back to, you know, setting why the ordinance should speak. So the, so the town board, yes, elected officials, but um, you know, the town board can change and, you know, I just kind of think about, um, you know, things like uh, the, um, you know, allowing alcohol on Sundays for restaurants and stuff like that, that could easily gone one way, the other up to the town board. I mean, that's, that, you know, but you could with, you could stop growth of the town or change the town. Um, so yeah, I, I think it's important to set the tone with the, uh, with ordinances and let them speak for themselves.
How many parking spaces are we talking about with a sixty thousand square foot space?
It's gonna depend on the use. So if it's a big box store retail, it's gonna have a certain schedule based on square footage. Uh, if it's a mixed use where you have restaurants and things like that, it's gonna be a different schedule that would be applied. So you know, it's kind of, that's a little more fluid. It's gonna be depending on the exact use of, of the footprint of the building.
That's in Chapter Seven, the plant, the, the parking schedules in Chapter Seven. Or Article Seven, I'm sorry. I keep calling it chapter, but it's Article Seven.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, uh, do we want to pass an ordinance that says your parking lot needs to be a semi-permeable asphalt, concrete, some sort of environmental standards for parking lots for a large large development, like a hundred fifty thousand square foot space? There's a lot of new, but sorry to interrupt. There's a lot of new, new to me, at least, I think, requirements for lots, parking lots over a certain size with additional like landscaping islands uh and things like that in this ordinance.
And, and not to mention that um we have pretty stout stormwater regs, um, which we didn't have like when Walmart was built, for example. Uh, so the first inch of stormwater has to be treated before it's released uh into a state, state system or offsite. Uh, so there are, uh, and there's incentives, obviously. So if somebody wants to do uh as part of their treatment, do rain gardens, for example, that would count. They would get credit towards treatment on that if they can show those numbers working. Uh, so there, there, it's all kind of relative. Uh, it's pretty, you know, again, it's, it's, you know, I get that. Uh, and then there's also in some ordinances we have, I don't think we've really put it, uh, pushed it in this one, but we can off, offer incentives for a density standard or maybe larger parking area if they do a pervious type of surface. So there may be some trade-offs that you can build in uh to maybe, you know, not necessarily require it, but make it an incentive to where it's a win-win for the developer and for the town.
Okay, so I'm hearing, and just again, bear with me as I'm trying to make, you know, take some notes, but I'm hearing, yes, that we're gonna separate out a major and minor that will make that threshold somewhere between sixty and seventy-five thousand square feet. And then if it is over that threshold, that it's gonna be heard as a special use permit. And then everything else that's minor will go before John for an administrative review. And again, this is just if it's a by right use. Sound okay? Okay. All right, again, we'll, um, we'll circle back with all of these quote decisions at the end of this presentation, just so that I make sure that we've got it all. And then if anybody, you know, it's a for now or ever, hold your peace kind of discussion, but we can always, you'll get, you know, we'll incorporate these revisions. Like I said, you're gonna be getting uh copies of these, um, hopefully by the end of, our due date is December third, so you should get it soon after that. And then have pretty much the month of December to discuss this a little bit more and we'll make some of those final changes. So it's not a forever now or ever, hold your peace. It's, it's not that. I'm just kind of saying that tongue in cheek. So it, don't think that any of this, like John said, this is an um a living, breathing document. Um, it's meant to have changes. So uh, nothing that you're doing today is going to be set in stone. So. All right, so some of the other discussions that we had as we moved and we saw a lot of, um, as we saw a lot of the comments coming in, one of the things that came up was these agricultural tiers that agricultural uses were kind of just um this one, one thing and they were allowed um not in resident, or not in residential, but there are a lot of these agricultural uses. So we're creating these levels. So a level one is going to be um an agricultural use that is compatible with a residential you, or residential uses, community garden, something that you would see in your downtown, your, um, you know, that where we see community garden or in a smaller um subdivision where maybe you don't, not everyone has a large yard, but there's an open lot and want to turn that into a community garden. Allowing the keeping of chickens and beehives, um, that is not only a growing concern, especially as the honeybee population has been dying off, but um, this is becoming more and more of a hobby uh for people. Um, level two, then it's taking it up. This is going to be your conventional farming operations, pastures. Again, I know you're not seeing a ton of this in Silva, but this would be that agricultural use that you would, your more typical thing. And then um your current ordinance, and we're gonna continue this, is that certain agriculture uses, those high, high intensities such as slaughterhouses or hog or poultry operations, those are not permitted within the town. Um, in terms of chicken keeping, we just wanted to go over some brief things so that you're gonna have to, you're required to have at least a seven thousand square foot lot minimum. Um, and it has to be single family, um, and it has to be, you're only allowed up to five hens, no roosters. Um, in the uh town limits because of obviously the noise that that creates. Um, beekeeping, um, a ten thousand square foot lot minimum. Um, and then these are the number of hives that are permitted based on the square footage. So this is all, again, you have not seen this, this is brand new. Um, so if anybody has some input or if anyone has familiarity with this, is an active beekeeper um and would want to provide some input, you would be welcome to that. We're using standards that we've been researching. Um, this has been a very um highly requested addition to a lot of ordinances. So we are constantly doing research on this. Um, and I don't want to say that we're becoming the chicken experts, but um there, you could have um definitely that we've seen some towns put in um design regulations for their chicken coops and like how high they have to be. They can't exceed a certain um square footage, a certain height, um, and all different types of ordinances. We're trying to keep this very basic. Um, but you will be seeing those use regulations again in Article Five of your revisions. Um, so just keep an eye out for that, because that will be something that is brand new.
Can I jump in?
Absolutely.
Okay, so as a, uh, someone who has chickens and bees, um, right in my backyard here, yeah, I, so I think that um five hens is too little um for here. Uh, I mean, I have eight, so maybe we should go with eight, but no, I think if we're gonna put a limit, I think ten is a little more reasonable. Um, I mean, I guess the, 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 the idea is you don't want to have, you know, commercial chicken farms going in the backyard, but
Exactly.
Ten, I think is, ten is reasonable, but I ten, you know, ten chickens is not that many, um, if you've got the space. Um, I think uh, you know, we could, I, I would at least put it to ten. Um, and, but I think most people are mostly like backyard chicken folks, if they have ten, that's a little, that, that's about as much as you want to have anyways, um, you know, just for upkeep. And um, you know, uh, and it's, and the bees, eight hives is a lot, uh, but uh, you know, I, I don't know if that's, um, if that's that big of a deal, but uh, yeah, the, the beekeeping is, um, that, that seems to be fine. I don't know if you want to limit the number of hive. That that seems to be fine. I don't know if you want to limit the number of hives again. And as far as, oh, back to chickens, still being roosters. So. I don't know. I mean, there are uh. Fair amount of roosters when I'm like, I know there's on Allen Street, right here, one and one riding in the morning. Um, you know, we've had them too. I'm not necessarily that opposed to roosters because we still are kind of rural out here. And I I I would like to hear what everybody else thinks about it. Um, you know, we've had roosters in the past. I've talked to the neighbors and uh. You know, and they they seem to be okay with it too. Folks tend not to keep roosters because roosters. Um, they they get aggressive and such and 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 most folks in town are keeping them. They've got kids or whatever, but. Um, I don't feel as strongly about banning roosters, but I'd like to hear what everyone else thinks about it.
Okay, Ben, I, David, I saw your hand. I just, Ben, I just had a quick question. Um, would you recommend a radiated um, like numbers similar to the hives for the number of chickens, like going up to ten? On an acre or is it, is seven thousand square feet enough to have ten roost, ten hens?
Yeah, I think, I mean, a lot of times it'll just limit itself to if with the with the chickens. I think ten chickens is. There's not a huge difference between five chickens and ten chickens, I guess, from a um, you know, from a standpoint of keeping them in your backyard. Um, so I think it's probably just, just call it ten. Um, and but but I would like to hear what other people have to say and. Um, but most people, I think, have like three or four or five and um, but sometimes they'll get bigger, you know, like well, sometimes they'll. Uh, we'll have more than ten or, you know, we have eight right now. We had ten because they die and whatever. And then they get, you get low and then you. Have some more eggs and sometimes it's it's a little bit fluid. Um, but no, to answer your question, I think it's just, just make it, I would just make it ten.
I have a comment about that. I think, I mean, we do have mechanisms for nuisances, right? I mean, if if you get a rooster and they're, so it's allowed, I mean, I have a dog and that's allowed, but if the dog's a nuisance. Um, there are mechanisms for neighbors to to address that. And I assume there are teeth in some of those. Uh, ordinances that can be effective. Um, but controlling a noisy rooster or something like that. So I, I kind of see that, you know, roosters. Like banning them, as long as we have a mechanism for dealing with potential nuisance if people are unhappy. I don't know. Anybody have any thoughts on that?
Not to. Change the. Um, subject, but my question is on, so on the original draft. Agricultural was only allowed in the HBD, the high density or high density district. Um, and so I'm wondering how these levels are breaking down and which which districts they are allowed in. I imagine one is allowed in all the residential. Uh, and then level two is going to be. The more dense or less dense? Because I was surprised that originally the agriculture was loud in the less dense, so the. Or I mean, the um, yeah, the lessons, right? Yeah.
Yes, so we, yeah, we changed it. So the um, agriculture, it was a good point because actually I forgot to say that. So um. Level one is permitted with standards in every zoning district. Um, I think we took it out of. Um, your downtown business, though. Um, but. I I forget, we had a discussion on it. I think we added it back in because of the community garden and we would like to see community gardens. We also know that a couple of towns have started beekeeping on the roofs of buildings. Um, so we didn't want to discourage that. So I think we added, I'm pretty sure it's in, I think it's permitted with standards in all districts. Um, and then level two is. Your um, low density residential because that allows for those larger lots um, to have a bigger footprint. And in your industrial, because your industrial is also has a a larger footprint, um, larger lot requirement. Um, again, we don't expect to see this, but that's where we would allow that. Um, and again, that's. That's up for discussion. So if you don't want to see it in those areas, we could just keep it in industrial. If you don't want to see it in residential, um, but we were thinking of more of the, you know, we looked at the outskirts of town where um. Where there was less housing and uh, those types of uses and those were the two zones that we saw. But if um, again, that's up for discussion and absolutely can be moved.
No, I I I think that's much, that's much better. That makes a lot more sense than than the um, original one. And then. Just back to the question of of numbers of of hens and whatnot. Uh, am I, am I, it's like forty thousand square feet. That's about an acre, right? It's a little less than an acre. So so ten thousand, you're saying about a quarter acre. Um, I mean, you could use that same chart you did for the number of hives for number of chickens. Really seems to make sense. Ben, your lot's about an acre and you have eight chickens.
But I don't use the whole, that's the deal. Like, I'm not using my whole yard as chicken yard and and that's what most people do. They're not going to use their entire. Property to have chickens running around, you know, our, our, we have a chicken run that's, you know, I don't know how big it is, but it's, it's definitely not the whole property. Um, and I don't know, it might be worthwhile looking if we're going to do that, just looking. I think there are probably some kind of guidelines of um, you know, that that. You know, backyardchicken.com or something would say, uh, you know, about like how many, because this is a common question. If you get into it, you know, like. How many chickens can I have? And they'll recommend um, this many chickens for this area kind of thing, you know. So so you don't have to, you know, because it's better for the chickens, whatever. Um, and and again, most people are doing this backyard chicken thing for eggs and. I can tell you it, once you get above, but just a single family, when she started to get above ten. Um, it's a lot of food, it's a lot of maintenance, you're cleaning the coop all the time. So there's some degree of. The the kind of the amount of work that goes into more chickens, um, kind of limiting how many chickens people are going to have to you. So I don't know if that would be that big of a deal. And and I just, what Jeff said, uh, as far as the nuisance things, I think that's, that's the deal. I mean, if someone's going to have. You know, seventy five chickens in their backyard or whatever, um, that's probably going to wind up. Kind of getting into some kind of nuisance and they're not going to be raising them just for egg, home egg production. They're probably, that's more of a commercial thing. But, but we could probably look at it to see like, yeah, what's a reasonable amount, but I can tell you, even though I have an acre. We, the chickens don't have the whole, the whole acre.
Um, I, although this is good and I think it's a good jumping off point, um, whatever the numbers are. Um, if we do get calls, it's something that I could pass on. And enforcing this probably will only happen is if we get complaints. Um, because we're certainly not, we don't have the manpower to go around backyards and count chickens. Um, and I don't think the town really wants us to do that. So unless there's a complaint. You know, we're not going to know if there's twelve chickens or ten chickens, basically. Um, so just be aware of that. I think. Part of this is going to be the administrative side of it. Um. You know, even though it's on the books, it may be kind of difficult to enforce to a certain extent. Again, if we get a call from a new resident that's moving in, we'll pass this on. Hopefully they, you know, they honor that and. And you know, unless we have chickens running around other people's properties and and on on the roads, which we do from time to time. Um, that's really only when we're involved.
John, do you see this as getting a use permit? People have, if they want this in their backyard, they would need to come to you for a use permit?
I don't think so. I don't think that that that's necessary. I think having some standards is fine because that gives us some teeth if we do have to go in. And say, well, wait a minute, you know, you're only permitted to have ten chickens instead of twenty. Um, you know, that that kind of thing. I think that that's where it would work, but. There's a lot of people with chickens out there. If they had to come before the board for a special use permit, we wear them out.
Oh, no, 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 not a special use permit, but just do they come get like a zoning permit from you?
No, no, they don't. Um, and traditionally, the town has allowed livestock in town limits. They just have to be. You know, pens, they have to be, you know, they they, you can have cows and horses. They just have to be in their own, you know. Pen area, not not roaming free.
Yeah, that's probably under the code of ordinances rather than. Okay.
Um, about the chickens, would, is there something that says they would have to be in a a pen of some sort? Versus free range?
Yes, yes. And all of that is in that standards. They have to be enclosed in a fenced in area, usually within a chicken coop. I think it's a chicken coop, a chicken trailer, and there's, there's like three or four things that they're allowed to be kept in. It has to be within a backyard, not in a side yard or a front yard. Um, there's, there's requirements for it, but you'll see that, again, those are going to be in that revision to chapter five. Okay.
Just circle back to the roosters for a second. Um, what are our, I mean, what are the noise ordinances? I mean, there are roosters in B one right now.
Yeah, exactly. And they are kind of free range too.
Uh, well, they were, they have been fenced, but it sounds like the fence is not in compliance.
Yeah, I don't know if you've seen the fence, but it's definitely not in compliance.
Our noise ordinance was created for. More noise from bars or in industrial or construction to. As a protection for the neighbors. It really was not written for animals.
Well, I would like to, I would prefer there not be uh, roosters in the downtown business districts.
Or on Main Street.
It's a lit, I mean, I don't really mind it so much, but I can see, I mean, we have neighbor, we have neighbors all around, so. Um. That that can be, that could become a problem.
We can easily say no roosters. Roosters are only permitted in. The high de- or the, you know, low density and medium density residential or even a high density, but. Again, th- these all have to be on single family lots, so they're not going to be allowed in an apartment or in a townhouse type. Development either because they have to be detached because they have to have a yard. So um, so I would say maybe roosters are only permitted in the lower medium density residential, if that's acceptable to you.
That sounds good.
But just on a side note, this, the, what Greg's talking about right downtown, it is, that's, that's a great example of. Um, how things can kind of go awry. Um, you know, it's, it's, there's a lot of chickens back there, like more than ten. And they're like, I don't know how many roosters, there's at least one rooster and there's probably more on the way. Um, and so, yeah, so this is just a good idea to kind of think about that situation because and and because it is, it's nice to, we don't want to over. Like um, restrict, but at the same time, you know, and it, we're going to have things like any ordinance, some, somebody is going to take advantage of it. And push the limits and then push far over the limits. And we just have to kind of consider ways to help folks move back in within the limits.
Okay. All right, our next topic here is accessory structures versus accessory dwellings and mixed uses. So again, I understand that this is confusing, so I'm going to try and make it a little bit less confusing. Um, and understand where our our things are coming from, our ordinance regulations. So first, first change you're going to see, um, when you get your revisions is that in chapter seven. We had had some use regula, chapter seven was broken into two. It was development standards and some use standards. For some of those bigger uses like mobile home parks. Um. Uh, sexually oriented businesses, cell towers and accessory structures. That, with the exception of the mobile home parks, because we haven't figured out how to put that into chapter five, everything else has been moved to chapter five. We might move mobile homes to subdivision. Um, just because it's not really subdivision, but we're not sure where mobile home parks are going to go, but. That's, that's, that's a us issue, not a you issue. Um, what we just wanted to let you know is that you're going to see now all of those use. All in chapter five or in article five. So um, accessory structures and accessory dwellings are literally right back, back to back. Because they're in alphabetical order. So you're going to see them in that section. So an accessory structure is basically. And I'm just going to go straight to the examples here. A gazebo, a shed, a greenhouse. It's a structure that is located on the same lot as a principal use or a main building. It can be detached or attached, but it's subordinate and clearly incidental to the main building. So think about an attached garage, very, very rare. I mean, it it's generally smaller than your, it should be smaller than your. Um, main dwelling. Um, but it's usually detached. It's attached is very, it is infrequent, but it's mostly a garage, a gazebo, shed. Those types of structures in your backyard. Um. The accessory dwelling, though this is what's different, is that it's a residential use and while it is subordinate and incidental to your main. Unit, um, or the primary use of the building, it's contained in its own unit. And it's um, or in its own standalone structure and it has its own separate entrance. So it doesn't have to be. Um. So basically, it could be. Let's use an accessory dwelling for a residential use. It could be an in-law suite that has its own entrance. It could be an apartment above a garage. It could be a she shed in the back. It could be um. It it could be another bedroom in your house, but it has to have its own entrance. So probably not just a bedroom because it's not going to be, it's not going to have a bathroom and kitchen, which is also required by building code. To be in a dwelling. So for it to be a dwelling, it has to have that. It it can be in your house, but it have, would have to have its own separate entrance. So like I said, in-law speed, because that generally has all those requirements. Or a mixed use. So say an apartment above, and I know this happens in your downtown in places where you're having an apartment above a commercial use. Or an apartment, um, say like a caretaker in a crematorium or a funeral home. Or um, a a storage, uh, some storage places have caretakers that live there. So those would be accessory dwellings because they're not the primary use of that um, facility. And those dwellings can either be in the building or they could be separate on the same lot. So that's the difference between a structure and a dwelling. Now, where it gets confusing is this mixed use, but. Because we wanted to allow a certain number of accessory dwellings that are just permitted by right. But we didn't want to get it too much so that. You have like seven or eight apartments and it's muddying sort of that main use, which might be commercial. Or might be something else. So over five units is going to be considered a mixed use. And it's going to be generated by, it's going to be regulated by a different set of standards. So for residential uses, um, you're allowed uh, accessory dwellings as a permitted. Um. In every zoning district, an accessory dwelling is, and an accessory structure is as well. Um, the number of accessory structures is going to vary by the zoning district. And same with the accessory dwellings. So you're not going to be able to have like four accessory dwellings on a um, low density residential. Lot, because again, it's low density. We're not looking to have four accessory apartments. Um, that would happen in a mixed use setting or in a, I'm sorry, in a high density residential or in your downtown business. Um, so maybe this is the description. So if you'd like me to go back, we can see what accessory structure is again, that's just. The actual physical structure itself. And then the accessory dwelling is more of the um, the use that's going to go into that structure. Um, but again, it doesn't have to be in its own structure. It could be in the main structure. It's just dwelling is more of a use. And structure is more of a building. So does that make sense? Um, am I confusing anyone further or is this, is this helping to make it clear?
You have examples of this last one like you did on the other.
An accessory dwelling? I don't, so an accessory dwelling, like I said, is basically an apartment above a use. Or or like um, like a caretaker house, like uh. If you have a funeral home and the caretaker, the funeral parlor lives sometimes in an apartment above. The um, funeral home or lives in an apartment out back. Um, that's typically where we see, uh, you know, an accessory dwelling to a commercial use. Um, we also see accessory dwellings in your downtown business where they're above. The commercial use or the office use that's on the first floor. Those are accessory dwellings. Um, you can get to it from the main building, like there could be one entrance. But then your, your apartments should each have their own separate entrances. So it doesn't have to be a separate entrance to the outside. It just has to have its own separate. Entrance, so it's not. Um. You don't have to go through the primary use to get to it.
I have a question. Where does five, where does five come from? That seems, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, it seems high, but maybe not. I don't know. Maybe I'm not quite imagining it properly.
So that was a staff discussion. We came up with that number just Paige, John and I had a conversation, probably lasted an hour discussing what that threshold would be. And we can lower it, but we were trying to think of the businesses in downtown where, where the majority of apartment, where we're seeing those apartments above commercial uses. So that was primarily where that becomes. That, and again, this is just for non-residential primary uses. So again, you're not going to be able to see four units or five units with another residential use. You're just going to see that with a commercial. So is your concern it's too many? Like, would you like to see it lowered to four? We, we did, we went back and forth between like four and five.
I think five came from the size of buildings and some of the existing uses.
And because it's mixed use and, and the commercial would be the primary, theoretically would be in areas that are already developed commercial or zone commercial. And the idea is to encourage mixed use uses if there is an ability to, to create apartments, for example, above commercial uses. Because that does draw people into the downtown areas and those commercial areas where traditionally where people have moved out to the suburbs, the trend now is to move in and, and having those those housing types and, and products, I think is important. Certainly as downtown grows, I think it's important to have more residential down there as well to support the commercial component of downtown.
And, and also there is move in state, in legislation to also allow accessory dwellings in pretty much every zoning district. There is a very big movement in the planning world to eliminate single family housing as a zoning district. And, you know, obviously there is pushback against that, but there is a movement to allow accessory dwellings in pretty much, you know, everywhere. And again, not have single family that it's considered exclusionary. And, you know, again, there's arguments on both sides of that. But just so you know that that is something that is happening in the planning world, that there is that distinction. So right now, these are like how we have it written into the ordinance. If there's something that isn't clear, you know, we're happy to do that. Mayor, if you're interested, we will, we can put examples into the zoning language itself so that it's there. Also so that people can understand, you know, that we want to try and make it as easy as possible to understand. So if that clarification helps by giving an example, we're happy to put that in there too.
I think that would help people that are looking at our ordinances, wanting to do something like this mixed use to be able to know if what they're wanting to do is included in that.
Okay. All right. Any other feedback or comments on this? Right. Sorry about that. Let's move on here. Okay. So commercial corridor overlay. So we know that there was a lot of feedback on this and we went back and really pulled out the 107 plans. We looked very closely at existing development patterns, looked at the properties that are going to be either have buildings removed or buildings or parking areas, you know, taken away and we revised the ordinance. So some of the major changes that you will see in this, hopefully you've all received the copy of the revisions. So instead of the hundred foot step back, which we agreed was just way overboard, was reduced to 25 feet from the right of way. And the reason we picked 25 feet, I'll just explain very quickly was that we wanted to still allow for two-way traffic in front of the building in case there was ever a need for a shared parking or a frontage road or anything along those lines. That 25 feet would still allow for two-way, you know, driveway. We're not talking two-way travel lanes, but there, you can get cars back and forth in front of a building with a 25 foot step back. We also changed the signage was, was, was way off. So now the building mounted signs are going to be allowed as well as one freestanding sign, but we wanted to reduce the amount of signage because if all of those developments are single tenant, that's a lot of signage as you're going down. So we wanted to make sure that that was reduced to just one sign on the building and one sign on the roadway. We also revised and consolidated the outdoor building and storage. I'm sorry, it's supposed to say indoor buildings and storage, outdoor storage. So that was written good correctly, but the outdoor storage is going to take place in the backyard. We still required that, that it's screened. We took away the redundancy of chapter seven or our requirements and just said, follow the screening requirements in chapter seven. And then we were on it to, again, understanding that this is going to be a big burden on those business owners along 107 that we wanted to create some flexibility for lots that are rendered non-conforming by the taking of the right of way. So lots that have non-conforming dimensions are still going to be allowed to be built on. That is an existing ordinance provision that you have on the books right now. That's in article one under non-conformities. We are also expanding non-conformities in chapter one to write a section on properties that are affected by right of way taking. So that will be just a reiteration of some of these requirements here. We also are saying that non-conforming parking spaces that are now going to be in the front of the building, because we're asking, we are still requiring that all parking be to the side and to the front or side and the rear of the building. And any spaces that are now considered non-conforming by being in the front, we're going to allow them to stay as is, they can repave it, they can repair it, they can restripe it, but we're just asking that they don't increase the size of those parking spaces or parking lots. So if they had 20, say they had 30 spaces and then the construction came in and lowered that to 20. If they can restripe it to get 30 again, that's fine, but we don't want it to go to 40 in the front. We just want them to stay where they were. We're offering now or have included in there now a shared and satellite parking options to allow some flexibility in the provision of parking in the commercial corridor overlay. And then also again, going back to some of those flexible standards that we talked about with the administrative modifications and having the administrator have the flexibility so that when there is no parking available on the side or the rear, or when the landscaping requirements that are required along the frontage, when that can't happen because there's no room, the zoning administrator is given the flexibility to allow parking in the front with certain standards that they have to be. We're going to encourage the use of, we talked about this at a meeting, so you may not have seen this in the commercial corridor overlay yet, but we're going to require, like, encourage the use of parallel parking along the frontage, just so that they save some space in there rather than pull in parking. So just some alternatives that we're trying to allow and give the business owner. So rather than it being super restrictive, like we felt it was before, we're trying to just offer some options for design variations that would allow a little bit of flexibility while still trying to preserve that. You know, the corridor as it is, and we're encouraging again, still the things we didn't take out as encouraging the use of shared driveways and encouraging the, again, the parking on the side and the rear. Okay. So anybody have any questions? I'm sure this always generates a lot of discussions, so I was expecting to hear some comments back. But I am hoping that these revisions are more in line with what you were thinking.
I think this along with the landscaping standards is a really good direction that you're taking. My question was about the loading. So you said, I read that you offload your goods behind the building, but that now becomes the front of the building. You see what I mean? Like, so the fronted, like, the ordinance has written that you have your loading zone on the side or in the back, but now the back is the front.
We're, we're not intending the front. Okay. Maybe that just needs to be added in there. The, it's not intended that the front change, that the front no longer become. We still want the frontage to be along 107. We're asking that people just park on the side and walk to the front. We're not asking for the buildings to be reversed and it's more just of an access, of an access point. I think that deliveries will have to be timed more in line with when the commercial uses are not in full force. Like you probably don't want a commercial delivery to a restaurant during dinnertime. Just because that's going to be your peak parking and would create a conflict anyway. But I think what we're trying to do is encourage just moving those buildings closer to the front, similar to how you have in your downtown, where the buildings are closer to the roadway and pushing the parking to the side or rear, not intending to flip the entrance of the building. So that, not so that they're designed to the back. Does that make sense?
So you'll be parking behind the building on 107, but you'll need to walk around to the front. So there won't be an entrance on the backside.
Restaurants are free to put an entrance on the backside, but we're, yeah, we're just encouraging the parking to be to the back and the rear.
I think David has a question. He's got his hand raised.
Go ahead.
I had the same question that Greg does. I don't understand if you enter the front of the building, how the parking, how you get from parking in the rear to the front. Say, let, let's use Walmart as an example, if it were to move or if it, if it rebuilt, it could not have that big parking in the front.
So Walmart, like, so an example of a Walmart, yes. So that is going to be designed so that there is, so. Yes, there can be an entrance in the back. So for something like a Walmart where you're having, you know, 300 parking spaces, yes, you'll have an entrance in the back, but it's not designed so that the loading becomes in the front. It's designed like you'll have a fake facade on the front so that there, the building is still designed to be pedestrian friendly, to be in the front. It, it's, again, I think I, maybe I'll just provide some examples where that's done. But this is a design trend that's happening pretty much all over the country where you're bringing those buildings up closer to the road. There is pedestrian access. It's, you know, entered there. So you're not turning your back on the road. It's really just bringing it into being more friendly in the front. It's not to say that there's no entrance in the back. It's just that that's not your, so for a Walmart or something like that, yes, it would be, but like for a restaurant, we're not expecting it to flip around so that like the kitchen and the dumpsters are in the front. That that's still going to remain in the back. And you might have an entrance on the side where you might have an entrance in the front, but we're not expecting the building architecture to flip and all of a sudden, all that accessory use stuff be in the front. That's all supposed to be to the back and it's just more of a facade treatment in the front. Does that make sense? I'm sorry if that's not clear. And that we can write those standards so that it reflects that because that, if that's not clear, then that's something we're missing.
No, I mean, this is a really common development model now on corridors like 107. Like a good example, if you go on Merriman Avenue in Asheville, I think it's a Whole Foods or a Harris Teeter or something like that. They did this for that, like the, so you're not driving down the road and seeing just huge parking lots on each side. They have the new grocery store. It's up on Merriman Avenue. The parking is in the back, so it's more shielded from the roadway. They do have an entrance in the back, but the front of the store facing the road still looks like the front of a store. It still has that facade. Are you familiar with that?
And that's incorporated, I mean, I guess the delivery and the loading zone is all incorporated into the parking and accessibility for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not like everyone's having to share one big door back there. I think these large box stores are used to this sort of model now. I think they've got that loading and unloading in those areas figured out.
I think the New Jersey Mikes and Starbucks, if that ever happens, that, that looks like, is that 25 feet back or? Do we know, like, just?
No, it's not. It's, it's further than 25 feet because you do have parking on that side, on the roadside. Now, keep in mind that they chose to do the building that way. The ordinance calls specifically that the the face of the building, you know, obviously the main entrance of the building be facing the public right of way. They wanted to be facing the Walmart side, so they designed the building in that manner. That's why you see doors and glass on the, on the 107 side is because our current ordinance requires that.
But that's the only place they have to put their trash receptacles and things like that. So that's
The dumpsters are on the sides. The dumpsters are on the sides of the building. One's going to be on the, on the Walmart side, on the Starbucks, and the other is on where the Kobe Express is going to be. But it's not up against 107. They're on the back corners of that property of that out parcel. What you're going to see more when Starbucks opens is probably more of a longer line, a queue going across the face of that building between 107 and then the building itself. So again, that is a condition of the current ordinance. As we move forward with special standards and development standards that you want to see, that's where those things would be built in. And we could hopefully combat that. David's right. And a matter of fact, what it is, David, is it's, there's a Harris Teeter and a, a Trader Joe's right next to each other. The Trader Joe's, they're both pulled up to the front of the road on Merriman. Trader Joe's parking lots to the side with the side entrance. And then, you know, with sidewalk and so forth, right on the front by the road and Harris Teeter's parking is in the back and the back and the, and the door, actually the main entrance is on the back side, but the back of the building is pulled up and, and designed in a way that it looks like it, it's the main building pulled up with sidewalks and so forth up against Merriman. So it's designed appropriately and we do see a lot of these trends in other jurisdictions and Waynesville is one of them in our region that, that has gone to this type of model for moving the buildings closer to the main road and parking on the sides and the rear.
I am familiar with those buildings over there on Merriman. They don't exactly look like the front. Maybe if we say that they have to have a facade that does look like the front of the building, even if that's not the entry point. If the entry points are still back where the parking is. To me, Harris Teeter, one of those just looks like the side of a building.
I'm taking down all these notes. So thank you for commenting. It, it is, again, we are seeing it. A lot of buildings where they move it up to the front is actually on the side. So if it is like a standalone, like Wake Forest just got a Wegmans. I'm not sure if anybody's familiar with Wegmans, but that's a a very, very large grocery store. They're, they're over 100,000 square feet. And they design so that they have minimal parking up front. It's usually their handicap and their to-go items like their curbside pickup, but then the majority of the parking is to the sides. And then they leave the rear open for their deliveries. Unfortunately, there, the one that came in by, by me had, well, there's a couple Unfortunately, there, the one that came in by, by me had, well, there's a couple that came in by me, but the one is bound on streets on all four sides. So they really had no, they couldn't, they didn't really have a side yard, so they took the primary frontage and moved it up as close as they could, and then put as much as they could on the sides. So again, there's always going to be some sort of, you know, design standards where not every, you know, that we're trying to write the ordinance so that it's, there is flexibility built in, because again, not every ordinance is got, not every lot has the same requirements, but what we're trying to do is, again, in this commercial corridor, because it's almost like you're getting a fresh start on 107. Because there's going to be new development, there's going to be things that, you know, you can redo, and then you have this beautiful road that's going to come in, it's going to be landscaped, newly paved. I mean, it would be a great opportunity to be able to start building and seeing some of those design standards, you know, as you're starting afresh, without trying, again, still having that flexibility, that you're not trying to push out existing businesses that are there. Just trying to make them, you know, more conforming, more conforming as you drive down the road, so you're not seeing all this huge variety of design standards. So look through that again, and again, if you have any comments, just get back to us. I, I realize we're, we're headed two hours here, so I'm sure everyone is at their max. I just wanted to go through these real quick, the last two things. So the difference between outdoor advertising, building, billboards and off-premise signs. So a billboard is outdoor advertising. They are used synonymously throughout the country. They are, again, they're synonymous, they're the same thing. So if we refer to outdoor advertising, it is billboard. If it's billboard, it's outdoor advertising. That will be made very clear in the zoning ordinance as well as in your definitions. Off-premise signs have been allowed with a bunch of regulations in your current ordinance, and we looked that up. I wanted to go back and review what was in your current ordinance, and these off-premise signs are permitted. So what we're doing is that we're going to prohibit those unless they're installed by the town, and we're going to define those off-premise signs as signs like wayfinding signs. So that's why we want them to fit into the design standards that the town has, and it's, it's the logo and everything else that the town has already established. However, we realize that there are a couple of instances where there are what would be considered, or if you wanted to hold that definition very letter of the law, where there's a, say, a building or a use, we'll use the Walmart, for example, where it's set back off the road and doesn't exactly have road frontage, but you still want to be able to put a sign up there. So signs advertising uses that don't have road frontage, they will be permitted to have one free standing sign with the, with a permit, with a sign permit, and with permission from the property owner at or near that point of access. So you're not going to be able to advertise for it, like a mile down the road, you'll be able to, wherever that property is accessed, as long as they have permission from the property owner or within that easement, their access easement, a sign will be allowed to be placed there. Again, as long as it's within DOT requirements as well. Some of the things that you'll see, there was an error in the sign, the way that we interpreted the off-premise signs was written for 32 square feet, and that accidentally got written into us, ours as billboards. So billboards are 300 square feet, off-premise signs were 32 square feet. That was an error on our part, so please forgive us for transcribing that wrong, and the new ordinance that has been corrected. And you will see some of these clarifications in the billboard section in chapter or article eight, when you get your revisions. So just wanted to make sure that was, were there any other questions on the outdoor advertising or billboards?
Just a point of clarification that, that the term sign means, can mean both sides of the sign, right?
Yes, a sign, sign face, when it is measured, is, includes both sides, as long as there's not an angle that is more than, I think, 90 degrees? As long as it's not more than 90 degrees, as long as they're back to back, it's both sides.
30.
30. Okay, thank you, John.
So the way this reads is, like, for example, Walmart, they have Goodwill and Shusho, those businesses could have their own individual sign near the road?
Well, that, that is a little different case, that, that property actually comes out to 107, so you have out parcels on either side, and the Walmart property actually splits it, and once it gets, once you get in on their driveway, it, it goes out and around Walmart. That is a multi-tenant sign. That's different from what, what Karen has pulled up here. This is more of a relief. If somebody has a piece of property that is not, has, has frontage along a major road, but that's where you would access it, maybe through a driveway easement, for example. This would give them relief to, to do a, a sign at the road on another property with permission and permit. So there, there are some subtleties and some specifics there. A multi-tenant sign is an on-premise sign with multiple tenants on that property.
And those regulations are in chapter, or in article eight. All right, the last thing we're covering here is just some common definitions that are in the ordinance about how we measure things. So it's lot size with other requirements. You're going to see, again, this is all in, right now, I think this is in chapter four, at the end of our districts, talks about how things are measured, and these are the dimensional standards for each one of those zoning districts. We talk about diagrams that we're adding in as to how to measure some of these items, and these will be clarified. These aren't definitely the ones that are going in, but these are the ones that we're looking at using. We may have to tweak these slightly, but just so you understand what the difference in these things are. So building frontage is the frontage of the building that fronts along the street right of way. If there was a road here, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but if there was a road here to the left of this building, that would also be frontage along this side. But when we talk about frontage, it's only what is along the street or driveway. So if it's talking about sign frontage or signs on a building frontage, it's only that which is facing outward towards the street or parking area. Lot width is usually measured at the front setback. So while this is how, obviously, it's how wide the street is, it's just a matter of where you measure it. So the definition, and I, I'm blanking off the top of my head whether Silva is at the, but I'm pretty sure it is measured at the front setback. So this might not be the correct one to use, because this is showing it being measured at the street. So we're going to talk about that, or we might have to fix that one. Building height, this is the measurement used in your ordinance. It's measured from the roof line to the average grade. And again, it doesn't take into account, like, the, the roof, it's at the peak of the roof, it doesn't take into account the chimney or the porch, unless the porch is enclosed, those types of things. So where your building height and where your setbacks are, what those extra facility or extra things on the building don't necessarily count. In terms of your setbacks, yard setback and front yard are typically, yards and setbacks are interchangeably used. But we refer to the, the setback is where your building starts, and that's what defines your yard as well. We usually talk about in terms of minimum setbacks or maximum setbacks. And like we just said, for the commercial corridor, the minimum setback is 25 feet, so we would expect to see that building setback 25 feet or more. There is a movement in the planning world to create minimum setbacks, so that it's the max you can do is 25 feet. And that is helpful, and again, creating that frontage along a certain road. But anyway, this is how you measure front, rear and side setbacks. And then our last one over here is our impervious area. An impervious area is basically anything that does not include grass. Gravel is generally considered impervious as well, depending on the size of the gravel. But anything where the water cannot pass through easily would be considered impervious. So that is your building and generally your driveway, and also possibly your walkway from the driveway to the front door or back door. So we're going to include, again, if it's not these specifically, it will be a, a diagram very similar to these to understand what those common measurements are, because again, we're trying to just make it a little bit more user-friendly, based on the comments, the comments and questions we got, that we realized that this might not be so easily defined. We work with it every day, and if, for people who don't work with it every day, this was a little confusing, so that's why we're adding this stuff in. If you see something while you're reviewing it that does not make sense, or that you would prefer a diagram for, please let us know. That's something we want to add in and make more user-friendly. Again, we work with this every single day. Even John and Paige work with it every day, so they're more used to see, you know, understanding what these terms mean. So if you're seeing a term that's not defined, or you're seeing a term that's not a diagram that really needs one, please let us know so we can add that in. And then just last, to sum up, is our, the future discussions that we just cannot do in the scope of this ordinance review, because we want to get this up and running, 160D, things need to be approved and be working, so we want to get this, you know, moving on, and this stuff will be discussed in the future. It's the zoning map and where we're going to be going with that, where to reduce, expand, where we're going to put these new zoning districts, and, you know, just an overall examination using your, you know, your land you study, and figuring out, again, where the best places for this would be. Some of the questions that came up during the review of this was the separation distances between certain uses. There's separation distances between group homes, sexually oriented businesses, bars and taverns, and billboards. So there are, there are reasons those are put in it, and those are very, this can be politically charged as well, because they've been in place for so long in communities. So we want to talk about whether we want to eliminate those or reduce those, or get rid of, as I said, eliminate or reduce those. We did not discuss short-term rentals, because at this point in time, there's a lot of case law being challenged right now. So we're choosing not to go ahead and regulate that's, at this point, more than what is already in the ordinance. So just keep a lookout for that. We'll keep you posted on whatever happens with those case laws. Let's case, those cases that are currently in legislation. Sorry. Didn't mean that. Litigation, not legislation. And then the Hillside and Steep Slope District, we are keeping that as is in your current ordinance. But again, as that, as development is taking place, those ordinance requirements may need to be updated and revisited to make sure that they are accurately working in the best interest of the development that is happening there, and preserving those steep, the steep slopes. So that probably needs a further study afterwards. And again, we are expecting to see, you would expect to see that there would be some revisions to this ordinance, once it is approved, just because it's human nature, like, things change all the time, there's new uses that come up, something may or may not work. And again, you might be seeing some brand-new use that you've never seen before. So your ordinance is meant to be a living and breathing document, so expect to see that in the future. All right, sorry. All right, questions, comments? I know we have talked forever. I've talked forever. I think it's two, we're going on two and a half hours, so I want to get you guys back to your jobs, your families, and everything else, but any comments, questions that we did not address, that we need to circle back with? And again, it might not be the time to hash it out. We might just send out another survey and have you vote on some of your the feelings or things that we discussed today, just so that we can get direction in providing you a draft. Everybody's quiet. Okay. You're all hungry. It's almost lunch.
I don't think there's any, I don't really have any anything about what we talked about today. I thought it was a really good discussion, but I am curious about the litigation for short-term rental that you just mentioned. I know that's a hot topic, and that's a pretty big one for even members of this board, so maybe you could just elaborate, just, just briefly on that.
So I'm, I'm pretty sure it's Wilmington and Asheville are both the communities that are having some litigation. There, one of, and I don't remember who is who, and I don't remember the specifics of each, but I know that one of the things that came up, one of the communities had tried to require, like, a license in order to operate. One of them, and that was deemed unconstitutional or whatever, that was against the, against their rules, and I think that went back to appeals. So there's question over whether you can license them, or you can even do a registration. And a lot of the communities, that is really the, like, that's kind of what we're asking for, is just like a, or I think the planning departments are asking for, like, registrations, just so that we know who is, who, where they are and all that, just so it's more of an inventory, not necessarily to charge them any more money or anything like that. It's just to really keep an inventory in case there's complete, you know, complaints or a police requirement. So I think it's just coming, the, the litigation is around what control does a community government have over a short-term rental? If it is allowed as a use, right now, they're saying you can regulate it as a use, so that short-term rentals are a use. So that's why you'll see it in ours as a short-term, short-term rentals are in a housing type of environment, so that where they are allowed and where they're not allowed has to be based on more of a land use regulation than an actual, like, business license or a so, anyway, I'm sorry, I'm like stepping over my words, but it's
No, that's okay, that's okay. I just, I was curious about that, and I, I did read where you, where we have some size requirements for those kinds of things, and I guess I'm understanding that we're going to talk about that later?
We can talk about, yeah, I'm not prepared to talk about that right now, just in that. If you have questions or concerns about it, I'd be, just shoot me an email, and we'll try to, you know, maybe set up like a, just a one-on-one, or if it's a question, I can answer it, and then we can distribute it to everybody, so if you have a specific question about it. But I think what we're trying to do with that is just, you know, allow it as a use, but we're not going to over-regulate it in terms of, you know, the registration and everything else, because that's what's coming into concern about it right now. But we do want to address things, the major things that we want to address with it are parking, and that there is enough area to have, you know, the house, like, that it's not, you'll see, I mean, if you've ever tried to rent a house, they probably put, you know, seven air mattresses on the floor in the family room. So we're just making sure that there's adequate bed space and parking and that kind of thing, so.
And thank you.
All right, any other comments, questions?
Anything else from the board? I just want to express my thanks, Karen, for all of the work you and your team have done, and also I know that John and Eric and Paige have spent a long time, a lot of time on this, and I want to thank them also for the time they've spent on it. It's going to be a great document when we finally get it done, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it, and it's really been a pleasure to work with everyone. Paige and John have been very, very accommodating and provide great feedback, and I am both, to both boards, again, very, very grateful for the feedback that we did receive, because it's very helpful in getting the, the ordinance refined. So as you get your revisions, please, you know, if you have the opportunity over the holidays to take a look at those, we really want to make sure that these are the best forward, you know, best foot forward that we can, so that those changes are minimal that you have to do afterwards. So again, just, just trying to get this to be the very best document it can, and we're all human, so if there's spelling errors, or there's numbering errors, or anything like that, please know that we have two and three people reviewing this at all times, but there are things that we miss, so please just bear with us as we get that, but we do appreciate the comments, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If there are no further comments, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this work session.
I'm going to make a motion, we adjourn the work session.
Thank you. All those, I guess there's no comments, but are there any comments? Then Amanda, would you take our role, please?
Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Thank you. Then we are adjourned.